Promises and kind of. Yeah, the plan going forward. So, first one. First, what's the two biggest, the board's two biggest accomplishments in the last year and a half? If anybody wants to start?
Culture change.
Yeah. I see it. I feel it. Um, I think a win was definitely to have a plan to get through the policies in a reasonable time.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's not really necessarily ours, but we're cooperating with those recommendations and. And it greatly affects us because that's part of our responsibility.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yes, I was trying to think of the two, I told Sean. There's been a lot, I think there's been a lot of positive changes, but it all boils down to. I mean, we don't do a lot of that, we just approve a lot of it, but um, I think putting the right person.
Well, I think a good, yeah, I think a good, um, positive achievement is in hiring a capable experience and genuinely, genuinely good person. As our superintendent, I think that was positive and good. Um, so, I had quite a list.
I want to see this and it's typed up, good. Look at mine.
No, I also think the, uh, the increase to the base wage.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big deal because that's a long, long time coming.
Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Definitely.
And I guess to kind of tail on that as well is, we actually did that one right. You know what I'm saying? We didn't just force it, we didn't do anything, you know? There was a lot of, that was a big lift. And I said, it's, it was one of the very first conversations I ever had with Dennis Fisher. Is that very same exact thing, how we increase the base.
Mm-hmm.
But if you just force it, that's not the right way to go. And so, it just finally took the right condition, the right time, John pushed the right way to sell that to everybody. And it just kind of laid itself out and it's like, yeah, this is, this is the right thing to do at the right time, yeah. Pull the trigger and go.
Yeah. I'm glad it happened, but I, I disagree with the rest of it. I think it was a long time coming and needed, but. I have to disagree with the rest of it.
You mean like how it was done or?
I think on, um. The presentation to the people directly, um. I can't say directly involved because that would be a personal, um, conversation with everybody within the district. So I think that the different groups that were involved, maybe, but, um. I guess personally, I would have liked to have seen those discussions a little bit more open. Open mic.
Mm-hmm.
Communication.
And that's my opinion, and I'll stick to it.
And I'm not sure, and I'm not sure I need to. But that, I, I hear a hundred percent where you're going with that.
Well, it didn't have to be a dollar amount. It didn't have to be a dollar amount, the, it didn't have to be the discussion.
That.
So just more, more open.
Communication is so important, I, I see more than we've had in the past with our stakeholders. Um, in the district and outside, so I'm, I'm thinking we're heading in the right direction with more communication.
Well, and I believe too that, um. You know, as people indicated to me that, so, I guess to clarify. If you were talking about classified, not feeling that, that their voice was heard, is that kind of?
It was across the board.
Okay.
Every. Classification, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
I heard from darn near everyone.
Because I heard some really good positive things from different groups too, so.
And I did too, it's not, I don't always bring the Debbie Downer, I am definitely devil's advocate, but. I've got big shoulders and I'll own it, every time I am not the Debbie Downer bearer of bad news, but. I feel that if somebody comes to me with something, that was my responsibility to bring it here and then I look like I'm. Excuse me, the fool, because I want to talk about the negative, hey, we can celebrate all day long.
Well, I wasn't indicating that.
But the other things need to be talked about as well.
I wasn't inferring that it would be a Debbie Downer, I was just trying to figure out ways that. You know, if, if the recommendation from the board, you know, should be different, then, you know, we need to communicate that. Well, so, I just wondered, you know, like where you were getting that information on the negative side of it, not being. Well communicated, so that, that was the only thing I was asking Amanda. So, um. So anyway, I think that, you know, as far as what I can see, just in the year and a half, because I have nothing else to compare it to. Um, I really feel pretty encouraged that, you know, we came together, we did our mission business statement and then. The strategic goal plan that, you know, um, started to transpire. Um, and that committee work, I was really encouraged as well by the fact that. John was really willing to release Josh in that, and because he needed to fill his hours for his, you know, future goals. So, um, those meetings I have attended and the committee work, I feel like is happening. I feel like, um, those experiences have been really good in terms of even like with the policy committees, as you have indicated. I really like the format, say for our policies that we were doing, um. Mister, um. Daniels, you know, put him up there and then we were able to go in and make comments on certain things and he did. You know, this is a collaborative work, because the people who are involved with why the policies need to be a certain way. Give the recommendation or say why this isn't working for them, so. I feel like for me, I was really learning a lot through that process because you're able to go, okay, so. Here, here the last time this policy was looked at was 2013. Here's the reason why, you know, it's no longer applicable to, you know, 2024. I liked that process because it helped me to have insight into the why.
Yeah.
Because if we don't know the why, it's hard, you know, it's hard sometimes to totally understand. You know, what it is we're doing and why it's important to administrators and educators, et cetera. Or even like with what you guys did and accomplished with the, with the budget and the various ramifications of that. So I feel like that that was a pretty positive thing, that, you know. Granted, I know that there's nothing going to be perfect, but I still maintain that, you know, with four new, um, members, we've come on. I know that Amanda has been very hands-on and getting in the buildings, I've tried to do that a lot, getting to know the people. I really loved what John implemented in terms of adopt a board member. Um, which by the way, I need to say, I'm sorry I missed administrative secretaries and, and, you know, day. Because I should have been there, but, you know, I, I forgot, I'm so, so sorry. Um, but, you know, I, I really feel like that the policy work has been important, I think it gives us a good basis. You know, when I was always working with Dallas and, you know, working with different doctors and so many different team members with him. They always had this saying that they said about, well, we have to identify the baseline. So, I think that in this type of work, we're identifying the baseline, it takes a little while for new people to come on. And know exactly where we're at, so I have really appreciated the people who have answered our questions, like when we've gone in. And when I've come in to talk to you, or if I've gone to a principal, it's been really, um, helpful. And I just really appreciate that, and I just want to say that I appreciate that, because I feel like that that is. The baseline for us establishing teamwork. You know, it takes a while, we were told initially that there wasn't very much trust between administrators and the board. Which was kind of hard for me to, to grasp that concept. But I think that if we were doing anything for the baseline, I hope that one of the things that we're doing is building trust. And so, I feel like that these baby steps, maybe they've been baby steps, sometimes they've been bigger steps. But I do feel like that those steps have been taking place. And, um, so, yeah, that's kind of where I was with my comments.
Alright, good stuff. Anybody else want to talk about? Accomplishments and then we'll talk about disappointments.
I, I did, I, I want to bring up the, maybe the elephant in the room that was the elephant in the room for a long time. And, you know, when we came on, the whole issue of chug water and all of that was a big issue. And there was a lot of unknown quantities, you know, the state didn't really give clear guidance, we know that.
Is that an understatement change?
Because they didn't know. And, and I know that there was a lot of public comment and a lot of criticism and, you know, we took that and, and we tried to learn from that. And, you know, anytime that you're on a board, you're always going to receive the negative comments, you know, you're going to get that. And so, I feel like we navigated those waters as well as anybody could, because this was a decades-long issue. Decades. You know, year after year, I've got the benefit of living here for my whole life. So I know that those subjects have come up multiple times. I know that there are sometimes accusations that get hurled when in reality, everyone's trying to do the very best job that they could do. And I feel like over the years, that has been done. But when the opportunity came to do something different, people sometimes are upset with different, you know? Change is difficult. So, we came in on this really new and I feel like, um. I do feel like that regardless of how it had been in the past, we still had to deal with what it is in the now. You know, as we were moving through that process. Um, I will say again, you know, it's very hard for me to sit here and take any credit for things. When heavy lifting was being done by the administrative team and, you know, everybody, so. I want to give the kudos because I believe in giving credit where credit's due. I think John handled himself, Mister Weigle handled himself very well, worked well with, with our chug water group, you know, that contingency. And I feel like so far, I think we're receiving pretty, you know, positive feedback from it. I'm very optimistic that everything's going to be moving forward in a positive and workable solution that fits for every, everyone. So, I, I, I feel like if, if you were looking at something, if I was looking at running for the board back in 1995, let's look at that. And versus when I did run for the board, um. I don't really think any of us really would have comprehended the, the depth of, and the emotions attached to all of that. And so, I just want to give everybody who worked really hard, I know Jamie worked really hard sitting in on those meetings with. With budget and all of the things and the expectations, I know everyone worked really hard on that and I want to say thank you. You know, even Ryan, right down to figuring out everything with the, with the technology department and. You know, this was a collaborative, uh, work and I just want to acknowledge everyone's effort in it. And say from the bottom of my, of my heart, thank you, it was a difficult season, it was a difficult process. But we made it through and I think we did it together and I hope that it can be something that we can look back at and say. It is well, it's good, you know? So, we still are going to be learning what that means in the long term, I understand that. But I think it takes an awful lot of, um, care and introspection and extra, you know, external looking at things. We had a lot of things coming at us, sometimes we didn't understand, sometimes maybe our questions to the public may have seemed ignorant. Um, and I apologize for that, but you don't know what you don't know, so you have to ask, you know? And so, I think that all in all, uh, you know, good job, everybody. And I know a lot of the people that were busy working at that are not, not sitting in this room, but I do want to say thank you. For working together and working it out, it may not have always been easy, but we worked it out, so.
Awesome. Well said.
Anybody else for accomplishment or disappointments? Or challenges?
So, are we on two?
Okay, two.
Well.
Actually, actually, I did, I did have a lot for accomplishment side, so. Going to go back just a little farther than eighteen months. So. For the entire year to that previously. This kind of thing happening right here, right now was not existent.
Mm-hmm.
That's a pat on the back.
That is, because I've heard that before.
It's a big thing. It really is.
One of the things that I have heard is, um, so on the negative side, when people are talking to you and they're like, well, you're not transparent. And so, I was the geek that was watching, especially during, you know, COVID and everything, all of the meetings online. And I'm like, well, you know, I, I feel like in reviewing our takes, I feel like there's been much more discussion. Um, now, which is not to say that we can't still improve, right? But, um, I am, I am encouraged by that and what's taking place, we. You, you should never get comfortable with your accomplishments, but, you know, learn and, and press on, right? So, thank you for that, because, yeah, I didn't even think about that one.
Yeah. Okay, well, so.
So, and, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I think one of our biggest challenges is just trying to work out the situation with the coaching dilemma. Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, you know, would have loved to have tried to. Um, get that settled before it went to a lawsuit, I guess, you know, that's a disappointing to me. But, that's out of my control.
Yeah, it's, it, it, yeah.
Comes down to individuals at that point, I think, so. But disappointing nevertheless.
So in general, I would say that, you know, my experience has been really, um, I've really enjoyed it. I think it's good to, you know, because I think a lot of people from the outside looking in, they may have an idea of how something might be. Or how it should be, or whatever, and I think I probably be, could say I would be guilty of thinking that you could come in and, you know. Make a positive change without too much work, I think a lot of people think it's easy. And not that I was really looking at things as being a super, super dysfunctional or even huge problems or anything like that. You know, that wasn't it, it was just a matter of, um, really being focused on what's best for students, you know? I think that when you get a little bit older, um, your own personal agendas start going by the wayside and you're just looking at the whole, you know? Um, so, but in general, I think that if I'm being totally one hundred percent honest. One of the disappointments probably came from some of the social media comments of being called stupid or, you know? Things like that, that, that's disappointing to me, that's just behavioral issues, I suppose, in, in general. I think that. You know, it makes you have to take pause, step back and look at it and it's like, well. So what can I do differently to pose my questions in a more intellectual way? That people aren't going to say, oh, they're so stupid, you know, I mean, nobody likes that, nobody likes that kind of bullying. And so, coming back to that subject of bullying, I would say that, you know. This has always been one of my goals and my passions in life is to. Um, wherever I go, I hope to bring something that is positive, encouraging, kind, those kinds of things, you know? Now, clearly, if someone misunderstands you or makes a false accusation of you. There's not too much you can do about that, because you can't really change, if someone's decided that they're just not going to like what you do. Or how you do it, or what you say, or how you say it, there's probably not a lot that you can do about that.
Right.
But try to improve, right? Which to me, you know, that was a disappointment, not gonna lie. Um, again, that probably comes from living your whole life in the same town and it's like, come on, you guys, now be nice, you know? But, you know, in all honesty, I also think that if you look at it objectively, it can help you to improve what you do. So, that's my hope, that, um, I, I can appear less ignorant, I suppose. Um, I, I would like to say that there are times that I would like to have, um, a tad bit more, um. Group. Effort and mutual respect. So, I think we can work on that.
People ask me all the time, how's the school board going? All the time. And I would have to say, they, they, they always assume that it's. Dealing with a building problem or dealing with parents or dealing with coaches or athletes or whatever. That does not bother me in the least, I've had people come to my house and sit down at my kitchen table, I've gone to their house, sat down at their kitchen table, we've gone for coffee. You name it, I've probably done it. Doesn't faze me in the least, I'm happy to talk to anybody. My biggest challenge has been dealing with the board itself. Hands down the hardest part. Okay. Well, that hopefully is something that we can work on, do you want to exp? Expose so we can work, work it out here? What, you give us some examples or? All of the above, like, any of the committees that I've been on, uh, the. Nothing seems to go anywhere and I, I'm put on the committee and I think I understand the instruction and then the instruction changes after I've done what the instruction is. And then something is set. For meetings and then that doesn't happen and I think I get that things need rearranged, but then if nothing ever comes to it. And the board evaluation that we were given the last time was set for October, maybe? And it's. May first and we're getting to it, I guess, maybe, and maybe it's just that my expectations of. The board and what I felt they were when we came on to this are different than everybody else's, maybe that's it, but. You were talking about having discussions and whatnot, sometimes I think I'm the only one talking. I mean, occasionally other people will talk, but when we come to these meetings, you all know, I don't, I don't barely talk to any of you. Like even in passing, we, we never see each other, we say hello, but sometimes I will call Dustin with a technical question. Sometimes I'll call Sean, other than that, I don't visit with anybody, I come to the meetings, I do my own homework. And those are the, the opinions that I bring in here. Or I shouldn't even say opinions, the, the, uh, facts that I bring in here. But then when we get here, nobody else seems to talk and invoice what information they have. So I feel like you're coming in here with seven different mindsets, because none of it is communicated between each other. Maybe somebody didn't talk to anybody, not one soul, didn't do any homework, didn't read their packet, I don't know. I'm not accusing anybody, I don't know.
Well, I, I think.
But then there's no discussion of what the other person knows.
So like when I have a question about things, um, like, so when we get a packet, I always do read my whole packet. So, sometimes they're directed directly to whoever the person is that would probably be dealing with it, like Jamie's received phone calls from me. If I had a question about something, if, or if it's something that is actually John's job or, you know, whoever's job. Then I, I would call him. Um, I don't think there is a lot of chit chat between us, because, you know, John, Mister Weigles. Um, updates have been so thorough for us and that it's been pretty good for me in, in terms of understanding of it. But I know you and I have had, you know, conversations about things that we've had questions about, et cetera, so. Um, so first of all, let me just say, I'm sorry, would, would you like, I'm, I don't know. I always think somebody should call me if they have the question, so Chase, I know has called me from time to time. Um, but let me just apologize, I, I didn't know that you, you had that, that lack in, in the information sharing, so.
So I guess my point, or, I'm going to use this as an example to make my point, I guess. So if you had a question and you called Jamie or you called John.
Mm-hmm.
You got that answer.
Right.
We did not. So that question might be something that would help me, might sway me some way, may not. But it may have information that, that's exactly what I'm getting at, nothing, that discussion. Doesn't seem to happen, so that's what I'm saying, you have information, he has his information, I blurt half of mine out. But I don't feel like that all comes about.
Right.
So I don't feel like the, the information is being, it's being shared great from one person, right? I agree. Way good.
Mm-hmm.
But then it comes here and it's open for discussion.
No, I think the questions, uh, bringing up the questions in the meeting is good, because it also gives the stakeholders the opportunity for us. Because I know, I know you may feel like you're doing a lot of talking, but I know from watching the tape, I do an awful lot of talking.
And I did, I said that I'm not the only one, but.
But sometimes I like to ask the questions, because I know that maybe our stakeholders do have the questions, people will look at the agenda. And maybe they'll give me a call or Diana a call or any one of us a call. And they'll ask those questions, so that's why a lot of times I will try to pose the questions in a way that I feel like is maybe going to get an answer for that stakeholder who called. Um, the other thing that I could say is, I think too, one of the reasons for my hesitancy to share my opinion or my thoughts on something. Is because I think everybody should have the opportunity to think it on their own, you know, so that, you know what I mean?
I agree.
Like I don't, I don't want to sway anybody, so I, but again, I will apologize.
If you have a, if you asked a question and you got information back. But if you have a, if you asked a question and you got information back.
Right. Right.
Yep. That information is what I'm talking about, there's a lot of swaying that goes on, I'm not gonna deny that, there's a lot of sway in that goes on around here.
Yes.
And that's a big challenge of mine. But. Not on my end, I do not feel, because I do not do that, I make very few phone calls.
Well, that's why I don't try to make those calls, cause I don't want anybody to ever perceive that that would be going on.
Can you, can you expand on that, cause I don't, when you say there's a lot of sway going on, what what is the? What does that look like, what do you mean? Cause I if we're, if it's something that's wrong, we need to adjust it and fix it and I I don't understand that, what you're saying.
Well, I can point blank tell you, but there's gonna be a couple people. Possibly in this room that wouldn't, that's what I get slapped for is being too blunt.
Never, never, so go.
Okay. We were just in a meeting not long ago and I was point blank ask. How I was gonna vote on something. In a room full of people, how I was gonna vote on something, I said, I'm not gonna answer that. Well, why not, I wanna know. Cause cause the vote's not here yet.
When was this, was this at a board meeting?
It was not, it was at a public meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry, I I went on the wrong trail and I was like, wait a minute, okay.
And.
And I don't think that that's wrong, I don't think, I think you can have an opinion, but you don't have to tell people how you're gonna vote, I, that's a personal thing, if you wanna tell people or not tell people.
The response back was, well, I wanna know because I want this to happen.
They can lobby all they want, but we still have our own vote.
Well, that's the lobbying part is the swaying part that I don't like. Just being honest, I am not always political enough for this position.
So let me clarify, I I wanna make sure I understand that point. It's the the lobbying and the swing from outside forces.
No.
Okay, so I don't under.
On the board.
But it wasn't in a board meeting?
It was not, it was in a public meeting, but it was not a board meeting.
Okay, was it me, cause you can just tell me when it was.
Have I been in a public meeting with you?
Well, that's what I was trying to think. Okay, all right, was it another board member that did that? Okay. Well, then that.
And that, and then there's the emails that go. And I I emailed to whoever I questioned the email about, about. Should be informational. Not, not to the whole board given your opinion.
That's right, that's right.
I don't, I don't agree with that, that should happen here. So those, all those things lumped together, this part is way harder than an, any of the other things I've had to deal with.
So your your last sta, is your statement saying that the emails that go out as a group for information, you feel like they have.
They've gotten better. Not as opinion based.
Okay, cause they, does that be. So they have to be, they have to be just information only, so and I apologize for those that were not.
Right, they're just information. Well, and that might be a learning curve too, you know, in terms of, you know, when you when you take on a position like this, you've gotta learn. You know, what's what's a no-no and what's, you know. Cause like even like with the text messages and whatnot, you know, and I know you've you've corrected it along the way, it's like, yeah, don't. Don't be doing that, you know, so so I think that's good though, I think it's good that we talk about it and we we did this out and, you know. And, you know, deal with that and.
And I think it's a really good point that the information that people have gathered that. Are helping them to decide what they're going to be decide, it it's a good thing.
To kind of share it.
During the discussion, I think that's really good, it's good for the stakeholders, it's good for us, I like it. It's a good suggestion.
So I'm gonna piggyback on that just a little bit.
Okay.
And Dustin, please help me if I if I veer off of the rules, I'm gonna go back to the rules. Of the open meeting and the Robert's Rules of Order. Just a bit because, yes, I understand what you're saying and the discussion at the meetings and all of that. But what I've noticed in the last couple of meetings, and I was gonna bring this up at the end, I'm just gonna do it now, as just housekeeping things. I would like for us to be very careful about inviting the audience into our discussions. We we did that and tonight was very laid back and we did that, a few times we did it at the last meeting too. My fear is, cause we're not supposed to do that. We're not supposed to invite, it workshop can.
But we can.
You can and they have to be invited to be, to be talked, yeah.
On the agenda.
But. No, if if there's somebody in there like, like with Mr. Salmon tonight, you know, on the conversation.
I asked Josh, do you feel like you have time?
Correct. Okay.
Formally. Because it is a special session or it is a board meeting at the formal level. The correct way to do that would be, Madam Chair, could Mr. Sandman address?
Okay.
And it. There's a flow to it, in theory.
And and first, first, um, let me say that, this is not a power statement at all, I don't care.
Yeah.
You can ask Mr. Weigl as well, to either one of us. The reason that I have, I want to be very careful with it is because. When we start inviting the audience to participate with us, then we set a precedent that they can participate. In any way, shape or form, and how do we stop somebody that says something that, that's talking about something that we don't wanna deal with?
Right. Or is not ours to deal with.
Exactly, so I just, that was just a reminder, so I agree wholeheartedly with having the discussion among the board. And bringing in those people when we need their opinion, I have no problem with that.
Or expertise or whatever that may be.
I just want to go back to being very deliberate about it so that we don't get ourselves in trouble where somebody's talking from the floor.
About something that's not actually on the agenda, that that's where that whole thing comes to an end.
And we don't know how to stop her, yeah. Yeah, so that was just gonna, and I will. Follow that up with an email for those that aren't here at this room too, but that's that's just my little.
Yeah, the only thing I can, I can say on that and and this is in no way, shape or form a pat on my back, anything like that, but. Do we remember last? Was it a board meeting or was it a workshop, must have been a board meeting that we had in Glendo or in Chugwater. Right?
That was a business meeting?
It was a business.
There were twenty-two visitors comments.
Yes, that was the one, that was the one, so, I remember there was a lot of.
Right.
That was the one.
Concern going into that meeting that this thing was gonna be, or be a barn burner, right? Okay, so. If you remember, I I actually pulled that one off pretty good, I had them address me directly. And I would invite them. And to speak through the chair and work it out, technically. That I pulled off correctly. Does it happen here all the time? No, not really, because it's, Josh and Josh and Tom are sitting right here.
Yeah, I feel though that it's been very respected as to.
Yeah.
Jamie, how do you feel, she's the only one that answers, Josh, how do you feel, he's the only one that answers.
So.
Yes. Yes.
I think that everybody has respected that very much.
And so, so I don't know if if any of y'all know this, but I had to send an email to John and I probably should have forwarded to the rest of you, I had Blue for sugar. Last board meeting. I addressed Jamie Common from this chair. Mrs. Wilson, Mr. Waring, Mr. Salmon. That kinda thing, I apologized to Jamie after the meeting, cause I didn't catch it right away until I got to thinking about it a little bit later, I'm like, holy cow. And we do, because this is kinda familiar and it's the, it's, you know, it's it's the regular folks in here with us, all the administrators.
Because you know people.
Yeah, yeah.
So what happens if you don't?
Nothing.
Can.
It's just, it's just as long, it's it's professional.
It's just, it's not professional, I'm just asking.
It it just shows professionalism at later date, you know, and.
Yeah. In honor.
In honor, in honoring people for their position, it's not, you know.
Yeah.
It's good.
You know, addressing Mrs. Wilson as the business manager instead of Jamie.
That's so good, right.
You know, that it's just, it's one of those things, I tried myself on it, you know.
Yeah, and I probably, I probably done it a lot too.
And.
Probably all of us, I think that's a really good point.
We do, and it's okay.
But it's a learning, it's a learning curve and so, yeah, I'm gonna write that down. For sure.
You know, that's what I'm saying.
You know, because of.
I don't like being called Miss Fox.
Yeah, right.
Well, I guess.
I don't, I don't like it, I've never had.
So, so actually, so to to tail on that, you would be referred to as Trusty Fox.
Oh, my God.
Right, you know what I'm saying, and it's just, it's the formality of it in the business.
Yeah.
And I got a lot of nicknames, but.
Yeah.
So there are some people though that really gravitate towards that being done correctly though, I suppose, you know, you're.
Yeah.
Your parliamentary procedure people who are teaching our students how to, so I I get that.
Well, uh, there you go, it's it's.
Yeah.
Setting an example.
Setting the example, and if we wanna be professional, we want our district to be professional, we also wanna be.
And it's okay.
Approachable and likable and all of that, but we do wanna be professional.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's no formality referees and they're throwing flags and whistles at us, so.
Yeah. Yellow flag on you.
It's just, it's just something you just have to be kind of aware of, and like I said, I did it the other day, just.
Yeah.
Bang right there, and I tied a little bit later, like, oh, yeah, I probably should have done.
I've been guilty of it.
It's good.
Should have referred to her formally.
We got a half an hour.
Okay, so.
But this is golden.
Yeah, I think it's good.
This is, this is a beautiful thing.
It's, it gives us the opportunity to correct it, yeah.
This is beautiful.
It is, it truly is.
Okay, so I I think we're kinda, biggest challenges is fulfilling your duties as board member, Amanda, where you. Did you have any more?
Um, I think my only other one is. I have a. A lot of people that will call and they'll they'll talk to me about something and. I'll say, okay, well, have you talked to anybody else, no. Okay, well. We have a similar opinion or thought on this. I suggest you call others, nope. I don't trust them. But then, I'm like, well, you can come to the meeting, and then no one shows eye, and so I do my duty. And I come here and I say the things and I get the looks and then. I did my part and.
Well, if it didn't mean enough to them to come and speak for themselves, you know.
But they're not comfortable, they're not comfortable, they're not comfortable, so I try to bring that silent majority through and. Then I feel, uh. As a guy guessing, on a personal note, I. I feel like I have not done my duty because. I didn't bring enough of the testimony, I guess, to. But give their correct judgment or or whatnot, I don't know how I would word that.
Well, I hear from people too, I heard from someone this week who was disgruntled about something and. My initial recommendation was to talk to. The principal, because that was the chain of command in this situation and. I don't think that happened, but I did, I did follow up. So I feel like a lot of these things, we can, we can. Honor their communication by acting on it. Encouraging them to act on it, act on it as much as you can. And then letting it go, I don't think all of that needs to come to here. I feel like all of this can be done on the side and it's beneficial.
I'm talking, um, I agree with that part, but I I'm talking more on like agenda items.
Okay. Sure.
Things that are here.
Okay, yeah.
I agree with you with things that are other.
Yeah.
Things.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I had sent Johnny to school with a blue notebook and he came home with a yellow one. Okay. But you know, it's a terrible example, but that would be a different one where as, well, why is the Peak High School. Principal getting twice as much of a stipend as the Glendo principal? Okay, that we can work on.
Yeah.
Um, that, like I say, that is to this level.
Right, and that is.
Yeah, it is.
And I was, I was glad to get Mr. Weigl's take on that because it it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, very interesting.
And that's where it came from, uh, to be honest, and yes, that. Communicating that way with the facts of what was going on would be fabulous to where all the people have the same information.
So that did happen and, uh, you know, so that that communication did come out, so how, but how. There's always this fine line and when we very first came on, there's this fine line, there are certain aspects of the business of school. What happens in the business part of it, you know, that is handled by the professionals who know what the actual hours that are gonna be spent. You know that that communication is taking place between the person who's gonna be receiving said stipend, whatever, you know, you know that that's going on. So what frustrates you then about that, like, do you not think that that process has already taken place? Or is the person who's reaching out to you with those questions, do they not think that that's taking place? Do they think that it's somehow something that's just arbitrarily pulled out of thin air, I mean, I don't understand.
On the Glendo Peak thing?
Oh, yeah, just with the the money part of it, I mean, because if people were reaching out to you about that specific item. As being on the agenda and being upset about that, I guess, is what I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
They were not upset, they were just asking why, clarification, and and because both schools happen to be my adoptive schools and I'm pretty proud of both of them.
Sure, why.
I was able to give my two cents of what I thought and then I said, well, but I will take it farther, so that comes from. Mr. Weigl's office.
So you contacted Mr. Weigl and Mr. Weigl.
So he then gave the response, which matched what my response was, so that was nice.
Good, good.
But, um.
It's okay.
Yeah, that was super helpful, um.
That helps, that helps.
But. So they got it from both aspects, I guess.
Well, good, so you did your your part and that that's good, you know, that's a great thing.
And I think sometimes, a couple things, people think that we have a whole lot more power than we do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's true.
But but also, I get frustrated with people who have a complaint. But as you said, they'll bring a complaint, but then they won't do, they'll they'll, yeah, they won't do, they won't come and.
They'll do the endo reference, they'll they'll they do the reference, yeah.
Address it and at some point, cause we all have had that, we've all had people that just, um. And some of them are valid concerns, very valid concerns, most of the time they are.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of times there is.
Sometimes they're just, you know, my kid brought home, they blew notebook, it's a problem.
They notebook, we listen about the notebook, right, not gonna be able to do anything about it, but I'm.
We listen, we listen.
Yeah, which is good.
But at at some point, it, and it's even broader than the school and the school board and everything, it's. Universal, where is the personal responsibility for somebody who has an issue to try to fix it themselves?
Yeah.
We, that is a, it's becoming a lost art and it's very frustrating, especially if you are a fixer. If you like to fix problems and you like to, a people pleaser. It's very hard to let it go and just say, I'm sorry, I have done what I can, I took it here. If you, you can come and have a visitor comment, you can do this, you can talk to Mr. Weigl. And if they choose not to, then they have made their choice of not to fix the problem, in my opinion.
Right.
I feel your frustration.
And that's a lot, that's a lot where I go to is here's the, okay, so this is, what what do you want the, or what's what's your goal here?
I mean, it's, there's a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of that.
Yeah.
And then, okay, so this is the process and if you didn't, if that doesn't happen, then this is the process and if that doesn't happen, then this is the process.
That's good.
I get a lot of processes.
That's so good.
Well, and and explain this, uh, just for clarification for everybody. Well, and and explain this, uh, just for clarification for everybody. The whole issue like that you and I had talked about when I very first came on, why is it not wise for people to drag in every board member on every issue?
We'd have nobody left on your jury.
That's right.
Yeah. That's right.
We have to bring in a third party arbitrator.
That's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, immediately go to a board, because you no longer have the ability to have the hearing.
That's right. To have a, you know, an unbiased or
Yeah. And so, so that's the legal responsibility of the board by law. So if that gets violated, it just, it is, it actually cut
Yeah. And that's part of the reason that we need to
the legal power of the board to write off from under it.
Right. And the reason why we need to encourage people, here's the chain of command. I know they get tired of hearing that.
It's
But it's why we have to protect that part of it.
Yeah.
Because if everybody gets strung in, then we can no longer, you know, serve in the capacity that we were meant to serve.
That's good.
While I wholeheartedly agree, I mean, I I knew the answer.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, I am, I, like I said, I'll I'll reiterate, um,
Yeah.
sometimes they'll call me and I'm like, but but I see it. I I'm also a parent there. I see it. I'm kind of already invested. You need to call somebody else.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You you need to call somebody else that maybe doesn't have that opinion and you need to talk to them.
Yeah.
And I think the main reason why we get so many phone calls is because they don't understand what we can and cannot do.
We
Mm-hmm.
And so you need to reiterate with every phone call what your limitations are. Because you, they're making the phone call because they're hoping they can check the box and get that straightened out with a phone call, you know? And you have to tell them that we cannot do it that way, you know? And it's disappointing for them, I think. So but that's just universally the understanding is that the board members can fix a lot.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Is it, would there be a and I know you say, you said that a lot of people that you talk to don't don't trust anybody else. Is there a way that and I'm just thinking here, I haven't thought it through, um, that you you could say, well, you know what? I would like to have instead, if they're not calling anybody, I would like to have Diane give you a call and and get have you get her perspective on that?
Mm-hmm.
Or
No, I think I go for it. The the ones that I have talked to.
That's true.
Because the others have gone on. But there are some people that they're just hell bent that there's some that they're just not gonna talk to. They don't have faith in them and 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 I'm not gonna, I'm sorry, but I I mean, I'm not gonna let them sit there and totally rip somebody apart, but like there's things in in my life to where there's things I don't wanna talk to other people or you know what I mean? That's why there's seven of us.
Mm-hmm, exactly, exactly. Yeah, there's different people, different perspectives.
So I do that myself.
Okay, we're almost a quarter after. Um, we're gonna hit our goals real quick.
Okay. Okay.
Goals for the next three months as individuals and as a whole, a board as a whole.
I really wanna get our, um, board evaluation. I I wanna use the one that's in this book. I'm just saying what I'm thinking.
Mm-hmm.
I like it. I I went, I've gone through it several times just on my own and I like it. So if other people don't like it, I mean, I think we should, we should just make a decision on which one we're gonna use. There's three or four examples
Mm-hmm.
in the book. Have have you guys looked at any of them?
I got all mine right here. I got all of them filled out.
Yeah. Yeah.
So whichever one you want.
I filled mine. Yeah. So I think that's like one of my top priorities.
Okay, and, um, okay. So a thought that I had, um, was the the board evaluations we did when we first started, we did them monthly. We filled out our, well, we didn't do them. We filled out our survey and then nothing happened.
Yeah.
Um, I would like for it to be a little bit more meaningful and do something. So my suggestion, you guys talk amongst yourselves, this is
Yeah.
just for, uh, conversation sake, is to do this once a quarter.
I love it.
Along with the evaluation sheet, fill out the evaluation sheet once a quarter.
Yeah.
Thoughts, comments?
Fill out an eval once a quarter? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yes.
Wow. Or twice a year. But I love the idea of of doing a roundtable discussion.
I kind of liked it twice a year and then do it on the opposite
Mm-hmm.
From the super.
from the, yeah. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Which, by the way, that's coming up in May.
That's kinda good. Yeah.
Okay, so board evaluation twice year, opposite of super. Everybody like that, I think?
I think that's awesome.
So super is May and it's June and October.
It's June, yeah.
June, July, September. June, August, November, yeah.
Yeah. So like, what if, I mean, what if we fill them out, decided which one we wanted to do, fill them out and then add add our next? So should they be workshops? I mean, really, could, can can we have a meeting that, what do they call them? Retreat? You know, where it is just says where it's not necessarily recorded, where we can actually talk openly with one another?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we can do that. I had
They're called retreats, right?
Okay, so the eval retreat.
They still have to be published. They still have to be published and the public is still welcome.
Right.
Uh-huh.
But
So a thought on that that I just came up with, talking it through is, so this is May. We have superintendent evaluation that is due in June. So if we did another one like August-ish
For us?
Yeah, I'm I'm thinking here.
Yeah. Yeah.
The election is in November. If anybody wanted to attend, just see how it works.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Well, I think we, um, as a committee, are talking about doing, for the onboarding committee
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
are talking about doing some, um, open things to, um, impact.
Oh, you guys had that video idea, right?
Yeah.
Or did that go by the wayside?
That would not be onboarding thoughts. That would be a continuing, that I, my understanding, that would be a continuing communication to our stakeholders so that they can get to know us and
Oh, I see.
Okay, so I don't, I don't read.
And it would be these kind of
I know, we don't, I don't have any idea what you're talking about.
And
But
Yeah, we haven't, um, we've only met once and so we're gonna meet again before the workshop and then we'll bring up a, um, we'll have a conversation about the workshop for the onboarding.
Yeah.
We've been a committee for a while. We met one time. That was, that was way back.
Yeah, and that is my next, my goal to answer that question. Yes.
When we met for the Okay. So I apologize, but
Work on efficient onboarding. Yeah.
So it's, we're not, I'm not on your deal. So can I, can I give you guys suggestions that I haven't?
No, it's just Yeah.
I just know what I went through. You probably know what you went through when we first came on, the questions that you had. So maybe we can give our ideas to these guys. Does does that work?
Oh, yeah, that was, we were here. I was, that's what we said at the beginning. Um, yeah.
Love it. Love it.
Um.
Yeah.
So we're, so we're meeting before the workshop on the thirteenth, et cetera, right?
So you're saying Um, at, we're meeting at some point before then, whether it's before then, we need to meet, we need to meet
Before then, yeah. Okay, sure. Cause I didn't know if we're gonna have a policy committee meeting, but prior to the workshop.
Before the workshop.
Okay.
I think we'll have a policy committee meeting, so we'll probably have to meet another time.
Okay, right.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Be standing.
But it's, I wanna have our, have us talk about that at the workshop so that everybody is on board.
Right.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, I misunderstood that.
Okay, so Amanda, let's go back to the board evaluation, August. So you'd be looking at August.
It's a thought. I mean
I like it. Yeah, I think it's a good thought.
August. So August, February.
Cause you would hope that by then, people that are gonna run come November
Would be at least thinking about
Yeah.
Cause they do have to sign up by August.
Cause you have to sign in August.
Yeah.
I believe it's August.
I believe it's
It is, it is. Before August.
Yeah, it is.
It is August.
And I saw it was
It's just a thirty day period, I believe.
It's like set the twelfth through the seventeenth.
It's like two weeks or something.
Yeah, it's a two week drive.
Yeah. Yeah.
It is.
But I'm pretty sure it was in August that that you signed and so by then
Yeah.
Yeah. Hopefully you're committed
Yeah.
to at least running.
Right.
So the end of August, so
If you need any yard sign hangers.
Sounds like you would need to be the end of August.
Sure.
Yeah.
We can, let's look at that as a, um, as an onboarding committee to to see when that exact
If it's in the school, I mean, schools
uh, signup is and
Okay. I saw it in an email. I thought
The school starts twenty fourth. I think it's twenty fourth.
Okay. I was gonna look at the calendar. Okay. All right, two minutes.
No, it's true.
So, um
And then six months would be the end of February. I hope we do it in August.
Oh. Twenty first. School starts on the twenty first.
Okay. Does State Fair end on the twentieth?
What was the question?
Does State Fair end on the twentieth? I think we start the fifteenth.
Wyoming State Fair is, uh, tw- thirteenth through the seventeenth. Or twelfth through the seventeenth, that week.
Okay, um, and so, um, Diane, your goal was successful onboarding and we're working on that.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Okay, what else?
Well, just our evaluations was mine.
Okay.
Oh, you know, one of my goals is, you know, really just making sure that, you know, we're keeping everybody up to date if they can't be at the meeting, um, to encourage better, um, involvement, I guess, you know? Cause you know, I mean, I think it's really good that I've been able to do some of these committee things and different things, but I think other people need to step into that too, you know, so. Um, and on a personal level, one of my goals is, uh, to just continue to help out where needed and get more acquainted with with staff, you know? Different schools, you know? I, we kinda had a interesting little thing happen with volunteers to help with the intersections and so we wound up with SRO doing the Sixteenth Street one because that one was pretty gnarly.
Yeah, no, it was pretty nasty.
Yeah.
They don't slow down. And I think with the, with the state taking the the three-way stop down, people were really, you know, picking up speed by the time they got to that.
It's really Sure. Yeah.
So I was really happy that, um, you know
Good.
that, well, so anyway, I was asked to see, cause I had told, uh, Mister Philo that, you know, hey, I got parents, I got grandparents that would probably help out. And we had really a lot of people that helped out and it was fabulous.
Yeah.
Um, so I like that idea. I don't know how, you know, where that could be fit into other things, but I really wanna encourage that culture where maybe as board members, we can collectively come together and do things or
Yeah.
or help to get, to help to bring the public in, you know, like, cause my list of friends are gonna be way different than yours
With the public, yeah.
or way different than Amanda's, certainly different than yours. And so I like that idea. I think it, I'd like to see that grow up a little, I guess, is what I'm trying to say here.
Mm, yeah.
Yeah, cause that was a really positive thing, I think, for for me to be, you know, involved with and and so and it was simple.
And thank you for taking that on. That was a good deal and it was good.
Well, I was, I would, I volunteered. I mean, I just said, hey, I I know some people would probably ask, you know, help and I could ask and and they did. So I was really happy about that. I think, I think we can do more of that kind of thing and that would be good as a board. Cause that's one of, that's our story, right?
That's part of our story.
Yeah. And it can possibly build some trust too and to the people that just don't know us, don't trust us.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Or maybe knows too well and don't do it. I hope not.
Okay, other goals? I think, I think we have a good fourteen minute.
Yeah.
Okay.
So can we, can we make a, make a date like by, can we figure out what we wanna do with these, these questions, these, um,
Eval
evaluation questions? Is that something we can do? Um, like which one we like the best?
Not in five minutes, but we can, the May, May workshop workshop.
Okay.
So, uh, May workshop, everybody look at the, at the options and let's, um
Okay. Cause there's several here, yeah. Oh, the other thing, real quick. So has anybody done their, uh, public service training?
No.
No, not yet. Was my last thing. So do we wanna do it together here in the boardroom or does everybody wanna do it on their own?
I was wondering about that. Okay.
I probably have to do mine on my own just cause my, um, next month and a half are gonna be pretty tight.
Yeah.
And I was looking at the dates today and it's gotta be done by like the middle of June, so it'll pass, but I'll probably have to stay for that.
Okay. I probably will too though, Amanda, because I'm just, at this, at this point, I'm gonna have to do a Saturday.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So
And I'm probably gonna have to do an evening.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, um, Mister Sandman was talking, there is a self-guided one that he did without, it wasn't when they did a Zoom, it was a self-guided one, but he had some issues with it. So before you do that, talk to him about that. If you decide to do the self-guided one, that you can do at any point
Yeah.
in time, but otherwise, we're gonna, everybody's gonna do that on their own.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
All right, so let's make sure that chase those, you know, dates and
All right. Right, and 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 he told me, he could, he asked, ask me when the next meetings were and he is available for those and
Okay.
his life is slowing down a little bit and we're hoping to have him more. And then, of course, Connie is just with, um, with Francis.
Yeah, she's got a family emergency.
With the emergency. Okay, um, uh, two minutes and then we'll be done a minute early. Uh, suggestions for the board to be more effective as a group. Two minutes, go.
Keep this up.
Yeah, I think so.
I like it.
You know, we have less misunderstandings if we can just reach out to each other. And I promise I am going to be much more diligent to reach out to everybody. If I find information out.
That was a huge thing, by the way.
Okay.
I think, I think time has just
Glad you called down on that one.
Yeah.
Okay, so
It's too, too easily overlooked. That, that's a huge one.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Right, well, you know, and we all have our own set of insecurities, I guess. Cause like when I have a question about something,
Right. Yeah.
sometimes I go, well, I'm sure nobody else is questioning this, you know? You know what I'm saying?
Right.
Well, Mark, like you just said a bit ago, our social circles are totally different. I'm sorry, I didn't
So, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, no worries, no worries. So so, yeah, we we use a mantra over there on, over the hill. It's like, who else needs to know?
Mm-hmm, right. And you need to think about it.
How simple is that?
Yeah.
But it's a huge, huge thing. So I am actually glad
Right.
Amanda
Brought that up. Well, let us, let us all commit to one another that we're going to share our information.
Brought that up. Absolutely.
I think that's great.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah. Good.
All right.
Liked it.
You're welcome, Ryan. Thank you.
Let's
Thank you.